What I would like to do is just formally thank our three candidates, Matt Kelly, Levi Miller, and Wade Wilcox. And I appreciate you guys coming out and running for school board. It is something that I think no matter where your issues are on the, where your stand is on the issues, I think everyone here is very clearly out to do what is best for the students, for the children, and the members of this community. And since I've been in this community as a teacher for almost thirty years, I'd like to thank you guys for coming out and doing this because it is a big responsibility. So just for me personally, thank you very much for doing this. So what we're going to do first, for those of you who are watching this, is we're going to open with a two-minute opening statement. And I'm going to start with Levi first. You have two minutes to just tell us a little bit about yourself and what you would like the voters out there to know.
Well, thank you for hosting this, most importantly. I know Zoom is new to all of us, given the current situation. You know, I'm originally from the Mattoon area. I've been a resident of Tuscola now for the last four years. I served in the military, in the Army, for thirteen years. Currently now a finance and business manager for a large dealership in Champaign. So handled the finances there, both on the customer side and on the business side. You know, right now, obviously, given everything that's going on, you know, I felt called to put my name in that app. I feel like that some of the assets that I've learned over several years in the military, obviously, would lead me to be a good candidate for the school board. You know, time management and focused and clear concise communication. And, you know, the biggest thing is being an ambassador, not only for the faculty, but for the students as well. And most importantly, you know, the focus of doing what's best for the students. You know, being in the military, I feel like that we kind of hold ourselves to a higher standard. So with that being said, I feel like as a school board member, I would hold myself to a higher standard to be that ambassador and to be that spokesperson. With that being said, you know, this is my first go around in the school board process. So I think there's a little bit of a learning curve to be had. But, you know, challenges, obstacles are to me and would be absolutely happy to take on those challenges.
I think you're on mute. There you go.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry for that. Wade, you are next.
Hi, my name is Wade Wilcox. I've spent probably the last forty-three years in Tuscola. My wife's Michelle, been married to her for about eighteen years. We have three kids, Isabel's a sophomore, Cade's an eighth grader, and Kale is a sixth grader. Went through the educational process in Tuscola. So I'm an eighty-six alum and came back here to raise my family, built a house out in Tuscola and started the process of educating my children here. I'm a community-based guy. I'm a warrior, graduated here, like I said. And there's a lot of pride that goes along with that. And coming from this community, I can give, I think currently there are no individuals on the board that actually graduated from Tuscola. So I could give a little bit of the community flair, a little bit of expectation, what it's like to grow up here. And, you know, quite frankly, I came back here to raise my kids because I wanted them to have the same opportunities and to have great, great memories, such as this homecoming we had this weekend for my kids. So I also spent eight years in the Army National Guard. And currently, I've worked the last twenty-six years in biotechnology. And I'm really proud of this community, I'm really immersed into this community. I've helped my wife and I, we have donated a ton of time, whether it be soccer, Little League, you know, working at the, my wife ran the concession stand at the park for many years. And we just are kind of a giving, give-back. And as I grew up here, it was very important because we weren't just raised by our family. We were raised by everybody's family, our friends' family, our teachers, our friends and family. The community is a tight community, and I just want to keep fostering that and helping the youth reach their potential. And I think that's just very important, especially in this time with the, you know, the political environment as it is, it's kind of unstable. We want to make sure that things are taken care of with our education and make sure the kids are educated to a level where they can go on and be successful. So that's the main reason I'm seeking the board.
You're up, Matt, with your opening statement.
Thank you very much to the teachers and the teachers' union. And it's funny, I have been involved with these types of forums before, but never as a candidate, and it's nerve-wracking. Just have to be honest with you, never sat on this side of the table before. So thank you again for hosting this. My name's Matt Kelly. I've been a resident here in Tuscola for just shy of two decades, raised three kids that all went to Tuscola schools. And they're the main reason that I'm running for them, but also for their friends, for our neighbors, and for your kids, honestly. I feel like I have invested in this community for the last twenty, almost twenty years, and want to invest in the future. And I want to make sure that the school system is providing a foundation to succeed for all of our students. So that's my main initiative for trying to get involved with the school board. I currently work as the business manager of the Plumbers and Pipefitters Union, based out of Sevoy. We represent about six hundred and fifty plumbers and pipefitters. So I know a little bit about being involved with nonprofits. We have a training school, which is our apprenticeship school. So I understand a little bit about how school systems work. I'm also involved with the Parkland Foundation, I sit as a board member there. We actually just built a dual-credit course for the construction trades with the EFE program. So I understand how the school systems work and I'm involved at kind of a basic level. Certainly not an expert, but I'm learning a little bit about it. So I understand the value of hard work, understand that we need to offer all of our students the foundation to succeed. If they want to go to college, that's wonderful, but if they don't, they're not settling. And that's my main initiative. So I'll make sure that I would advocate and fight for that, for the trades being taught in the schools, but also all of the foundations our students need.
Thank you very much. And now what we're going to do, I'm going to have each candidate will select one of the questions that they really wanted to get across. And they will have two minutes for that question. And Wade, we are going to start with you first. If you, and what I'd like to do, if you could just tell me, I don't, you should have them numbered. They were sent to you. If you have the number of the question, I'll write it down so I don't ask you the same question twice.
Okay, it's number one, and then basically, you know, that's why I'm running for the school board. And it's going to be kind of what's really kind of pushed me since I've come back from Tuscola, from when I went to college. You know, when I went to school, I just had one administrator, one superintendent, and one in grade school and high school, I just had one principal. And Tuscola was like a destination, and teachers never left. They never made the big dollars that they can up in Chicago, but it was like a community. And so that's where I wanted to bring my family back here and start it here. But what's really concerning me right now the most is the financial aspect. We all just went through and experienced how unpleasant it can be when funds get low and when the state starts stepping back. And, you know, my thing is this, what concerns me the most about that is what's going to happen to our children? Where would they go? How far will they be bust? You know, our community really thrives, it centers around the schools. You know, I don't know if you went to the football games or any of the volleyball games finally opened up, people really popped back in there and it made a big difference. So for me, it's keeping us in a positive financial flow, which is super important. And two, our facilities, and I've watched this, have kind of lagged behind. As I go in and meet with the teachers with my children, I look at the walls and they look the same color as when I was there, the same chalkboards, the same tiles. I just think that as we move into the future, I know that the legislation right now is looking at decreasing the number of school districts by twenty-five percent, which is about roughly two hundred and six districts being dissolved and brought together. I don't want to do that. And if we do have to do that, my biggest thing is I think we need to bring our classrooms into, you know, the next wave of how they need to be for the future and how kids need to be taught.
Thank you, Wade. Very good. And I will tell you, yes, the paint is pretty much the same as when you were there. I just got mine painted after thirty years, so. Let's see. Matt, you are up second, and which question would you like to answer?
So I would go with number two. If elected, what will be your priorities? And the three main priorities that I would focus on if I'm elected would be, one, bringing back comprehensive industrial arts program. Two would be supporting our teachers and staff. Three would be maintaining and improving our facilities. And since we're short on time, I'll focus on the industrial arts portion of that. I gained such a great experience when I got to take industrial art-style classes in high school and then at Parkland. They were some of the most fun classes I got to take. I wasn't a great student overall, but I really enjoyed those classes. And I think our students today deserve that same opportunity. And I would work with our administrators and teachers to identify funding that could, and maybe alternative funding, that could bring the tools and resources we need to this community to bring that instruction back. A lot of our students will go to college after high school, but not all of them. And I think they should all understand that they have options available to them after high school, and it may not require a college degree. So, and again, as I said, I'm involved with an apprenticeship program. We just had two hundred and fifty applicants to fill about ten positions as pipefitter plumber apprentices. So I think it's getting better, but I would keep encouraging that. And then if I have enough time, and you can cut me off, Mr. Sweeney, at your convenience, but one of the things, the kind of the next one would be the number twenty-five, and how to recruit and retain teachers and staff. And I got to be involved with another community forum-style thing. And they had a welcome-back or welcome-home program for students who had left the community that are in the teaching field. And they partnered with banks and insurance companies in the community to offer incentives to teachers and administrators to come back to their hometown. And I just thought that was a fantastic idea and really kind of thinking outside the box. And I would love to try and do that.
Thank you. And we may, we may get to that question. You don't have to try to get them all in in your two minutes on that. So we'll hopefully get as many of these questions as we can get. Now, Levi, you can select your question that you had wanted to cover.
Yeah, so I selected question number eleven. What particular experience or skills do you possess that would be beneficial to the district? Once again, relating it back to my thirteen years of military experience and fourteen months of the being in Iraq. You know, that allowed me to learn how to effectively establish, you know, goals, to create a plan, and, you know, how to effectively execute that plan. But most importantly, not only coming up with a clear and concise vision, but then coming back to reevaluate those goals. And if need be, we reevaluate the goals. If they're not being met, we need to come up with a new plan, re-execute that plan. And then at that point, you know, hold people accountable. You know, without accountability, goals are pointless. So with that being said, you know, time management, of course, you know, with that. But coming up with a clear and concise plan, sticking with the plan and not wavering from the plan. And then the follow-up action with that. Pretty much clear and concise and short to the point, that's kind of just how I operate.
Great, thank you. Okay, and we're going to do one, we're going to do one more question for each of the candidates that you select, and then I will be randomly selecting questions for you after that. So we're going to go, I guess for this round, I guess, we'll go back to, let's see, to make it fair. Matt, I'm going to have you go with your next question. And if you wanted to go back to twenty-five, I'd cut you off on that one, or whichever one you want.
So yeah, I would stay there. And as I said, this program was a welcome-back-home program. And it was a partnership between the community, the school, and then the business community. And it was to encourage previous students or previous community members to come back to teach at that school, teach or be administrators or staff of some sort. And they partnered with banks to maybe offer incentive programs for their banking accounts or their mortgage accounts, partnered with insurance companies to give them some incentive. And I know we have a thriving business community here in this area, and that was just a really neat idea. And I think thinking outside the box would be a great thing for this community because that it's a partnership between the whole community and it would serve all and encourage our teachers to stay because I know that's a battle at this point. Sorry, my cat is squeaking.
That's okay, I have a dog, luckily, she's not barking in the middle of this. Okay, and let's see. So that was Matt, and then we're back to Levi. If you have a second question you would like to cover?
Yeah, so also question number twenty-five. You know, what suggestions do I have for recruiting and retention? You know, I got involved with Tuscola, you know, the high school, when I was a recruiter for the National Guard, made some really good relationships. A lot of the, you know, folks that are here in Tuscola that have joined the military, you know, I was, you know, ultimately responsible for developing that relationship, not only with the student, but with the faculty of the school. You know, and it really leads me to believe that we got to think outside the box as far as getting the teachers here and good quality teachers. And then once we do have them, to retain them, to, you know, not let that be a revolving door. And how do we do that? You know, once again, you know, morale and camaraderie and all the things that Tuscola is known for. You know, the strong community ties. And, you know, even just me being here in the last four years, the relationships and, you know, that I've developed within the community. And I think that goes a long way. People will stay where they feel like that they are, you know, wanted and/or needed and appreciated, so.
And then Wade, I believe we're on this, we are last question of the ones you get to select. And did you have a specific question?
Yes, number twenty-one, what kind of relationship should a district and board have with the community, with the parents and families? Being a longtime member, almost fifty years of living in Tuscola, before I decided to run, I thought that this was a super important thing because I think everybody's voice is very important. So I went around to friends, family, many teachers that I know. And I was talking to them, and many came to me on their own. It was quite a bit, it was quite a bit, a lot of people had a lot of concerns. So I just would like to establish more of an open-door policy because my sister, who's been a longtime teacher, I hear a lot from her about the educational process, her ups and downs, things that would help her. So I really like to get a lot of input. I'm that type of person, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. I'm not a teacher, but I'd like to learn more about things that would make our educational process much better for our children. Not only having an open policy, but I would really encourage people to come with a solution. I'm not the type of person that really wants to hear nothing but negativity. Let's hear the negative, but then let's hear how we can make it better. So major open-door policy, come to me with answers. And, you know, we're all in this together. So I think that from top to bottom, we should sit down and work that out. That's just kind of the way I like to do it.
Now I get to start picking the questions. And if you've already answered the question, I'll at least give you an opportunity if you want to add to your answer. Certainly won't deny you any time. But if you've already answered it, feel free to just move, we can move on to the next question. But I do want to start with question number one. And what I will do is Jesse Young has sent in written responses. And I will read hers, just so she has some of that, some of the same time on it. So I'm going to start with question number one, which is, why are you running for the Board of Education? And Jesse Young responds, "This school district is extremely close to my heart. Our children represent the future leaders and residents of the city of Tuscola. I feel as parents and community leaders, we shoulder the responsibility to provide them the greatest opportunity to succeed in life's endeavors and pursue their dreams. Education is of course paramount in building intellect, character, and community for their future success. Whether pursuing a college education, technical trade, or becoming a homemaker, instilling the importance of education in our children and facilitating their ambitions is vital." And that was from candidate Jesse Young. So what I'm going to do now, I'm going to start with Matt, if you would like to answer question number one. Why are you running for the Board of Education?
Sure. I am running because I really love and enjoy the Tuscola community, and it has been wonderful for my kids. All three went to the public schools, and I still have one sophomore, Jack, that's at the high school. And I'm running to make sure that he and every other student has the best school and the best future available to them. And the way I think we do that as a community is to make sure that each student's ready to meet all of the challenges of being an adult because it is a difficult and strange world we live in. And I think that should be the goal of all of the entire community, but especially the school system.
Thank you. Levi, we're going to go to you second for question one, which is, why are you running for the Board of Education?
You know, I would have to say that, once again, it would be the focus, what's best for the students. And, you know, hearing the input from the community, being able to have them voice their concerns and have them feel to be comfortable to come to me and voice those concerns. And, you know, not only, like was mentioned earlier, is the negativity, and that's going to be part of it, but also coming up with a plan of how we can do what's best for all. So, you know, a year ago, if you would ask me if I was considering this, that I'd had to say no. My fiancee, she just started her masters in school administration. She is a speech and language pathologist at Urbana Middle School. So I see some of the things that correlate to the same problems that Tuscola would have, whether it be Urbana or Tuscola. And I'm seeing it from the end of what the teachers deal with and the adversities that they have to overcome. So to be involved within the community and to come up with plans on how to benefit not only the students but the faculty, I think that's where I would really excel at, not only for the school, but then for the community as well.
I know you've answered question one already. Is there anything you would like to add to that, why you are running for Board of Education?
Yes, I'd like to add one last point. And that one last point was, I was speaking about how the state was looking at getting rid of twenty-five percent of districts. And basically, I want to make sure that if that was to somehow ever get to Tuscola, our facilities were up to snuff to where we would be the county school of choice, at least on the high school side, who knows how they would maybe upgrade school. But I would like to have the facilities upgraded and classrooms at a level to where we would be the school of choice. That's the one last thing that I'm really worried about.
That is question number one. Now I'm going to, and I'm not doing all of these in order, I'm going to skip around, but I do think question two is also a very good question. And what I'm going to do is start with Levi. Question number two, if elected, what will be your priorities?
Yeah, and priority one, being the students, doing what's best for them. So, you know, with that being said, is kind of related to like question number twenty-two. How do we better prepare students as citizens? You know, it's been mentioned, and I think that we all kind of have the same basis as far as, you know, the priority has to be, how do we prepare these students who are going to then exit high school and enter our community as adults? So the priority has to be to prepare, to get them ready to be an adult, whether that be, you know, off to college or off to a military service if they choose so, or the skills and the trades. And, you know, we have to look at what's going to be best for all students, but we also have to individualize the priorities for those students and set them on a path for success. So, you know, going back, what would my priority be? Once again, it would be focus and focus individually for what's best for that student at hand.
Thank you. Let's see, Wade, I have you up next. So if elected, what will be your priorities?
First and foremost, I have three priorities. And those priorities is to make sure that the facilities are up to snuff and having a great environment for these children to learn in. Number two, I'd like to make sure that the teachers have what they need to make sure our children are successful and that make sure the teachers are successful teaching them. And the last thing is I'd like to foster that unity and, you know, making sure that everybody's one, we are all one here, and that we can get the community, the school, the teachers, administration, and all parents and children all together as one, especially in the changing environment that we are. And that will make us all successful.
Matt, I know you took question number two and have answered it already. Is there anything you would like to add to that, if elected, what will be your priorities?
Sure. So as I said, three priorities, the main priorities are bringing back a comprehensive industrial arts program, supporting the teachers and staff, and maintaining and improving our facilities. I think I've covered the industrial arts program, it's near and dear to my heart because I'm a plumber, pipefitter. But I'm also a labor advocate. At the end of the day, that's kind of my, that's really my passion. And I would work to make sure that the teachers and the staff, that their voices are being heard and being that their voices are being heard and, and being paid attention to. I know it's a difficult job and I just would make sure that their voices being heard because they're the ones in the classroom. I think I know a lot, but they know what goes on in a classroom. I don't. I mean, then maintaining and improving our facilities and just a small personal story. Two of my kids refused to use the restroom at the high school because they're in such disrepair and that is really difficult, especially because I'm a plumber. And I know it's not an easy, there's no easy solution and it's, it's no one's fault, but working to make sure that all of our students feel safe and, and healthy in school and are able to use the bathroom is, is a a very important thing because I think that encourages better learning. So those are my main priorities that I would work at.
And I will read Jesse Young's answer. If elected, what will be your priorities? It will be to continue the path we've begun to strengthen the collaboration between the board, administrators, teachers and parents. Additional priorities include the five-year construction plan, support for the superintendent's plan for technology updates in the classrooms and curriculum updates. That is Jesse Young. Okay, my next question for you. And let's see, I'm trying to be fair to disperse these equally. Why don't we start with, I guess I'll start with Jesse first. The question I am going to use, skipping to question number four. What qualities or behaviors should board members exhibit? I think we as adults, teachers, board members, administrators, serve as models. And in today's world, so much of our personal life is out there. I think this is a good question to, to see. So question four. What qualities, behaviors should board members exhibit? Jesse Young responds, strong leadership, communication, creative creativity, budget and analytical skills. Along with the ability to constructively and respectively, respectfully disagree with another member. That is Jesse Young's response. And I am going to start with Wade. What qualities, behaviors should board members exhibit?
I think when you become a board member, you represent all. So I think you have to keep at the, at the, at the tip of the iceberg that you're there for everybody. And not just yourself or your group. I think you have to be a really good listener and it's very hard to be a good listener. And with what I have to do for a living, talking with physicians, I have to listen to every little thing that comes from them because it, it may be the difference between life and death. Strong leadership and sometimes that's not the easiest thing to do. And the last thing is being very fiscally responsible because once again, we don't want to go through what we went through. And it's making the most out of the finances that we have available. You're welcome.
Matt, that's, I'm going to post that question to you then. What qualities or behaviors should board members exhibit?
Thank you. I think a board member should lead by example and demonstrate leadership by listening, observing and supporting those people involved with the school system. Board members should respect differences, listen to everyone and work together for our kids. I believe that to do that aboard, the, a board member is there to provide a balance between the teachers, the students, the community, but also the administrators because they're all under a lot of stress. So trying to collaborate and provide a balance for all of those is really key. And also leaving politics and personal feelings out. I know it's a pretty divisive society we live in now. But I think to be a successful school board member, you have to leave those behind and focus on what is doing, focus on doing what's best for the kids. And if I'm elected, that is exactly what I will do.
Then finally Levi.
I would say selfless service. You know, that's why we're, we're all here. We're doing it for the greater good of the, the, the students. You know, the leadership, you know, the unwavering of, you know, when you do have those concerns brought to you of, you know, communication and more importantly, listening. You know, it, it's easy to talk, but to, to listen and to understand that not everybody's going to have the same viewpoints that we do. So you know, having in that open mind and, and taking those concerns with, with that open mind. So you know, I also think the, thinking outside the box, you know, what has traditionally been done in the past doesn't mean that it always has to be done the same way. And fiscal responsibility, you know, we may not have the most money, but we can sure do a lot with what we do have.
So I, I, I feel I'm getting a very good handle on your, your goals and your ideals and the direction you're heading. So this question is going to be question number nine. How can a board know if its goals are being accomplished? And its policies carried out because you're not there all the time. I mean, I've been in my room for thirty years. And unfortunately, I don't think I've ever had a board member come in and just sit in on my classroom. I always welcome you. Anytime you want to come in and, and watch my classroom. There'll be the one day things go wrong, but I'm, I'm still welcome to you guys coming in and seeing what, what I do on a personal day. So how do you know if your goals are being accomplished and policies carried out? And we're going to start with Levi.
Yeah. So I think the biggest thing is involvement. Being, you know, you know, not only if we can be there, like you said, in the, in the classroom, but the involvement within the community. And you know, keeping our ears to the ground, listening. And then, you know, kind of going back to what I talked about earlier is that we implement a plan and the plan can be great. But if we're not tracking the progress and then we're not holding, you know, the ones accountable, then, then we're failing. So I think the biggest thing is not only creating that plan, but then also tracking the progress of that plan. And then sometimes we have to pivot, reevaluate and re-execute the plan. And then right back to, to tracking the progress and more importantly, like I said, the accountability of that.
I'm going to ask you the same question. How can a board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out?
Mr. Sweeney, did you see me?
Yes.
Okay, I was making sure. I didn't want to speak out of turn. I, I think this process is, is a deep process and it's a situation where you have to be involved with administrators to, 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 and be around the school, be around the sporting events, watch the children, ask questions of your constituency and the people of the community. But I also think it's, it's, it's a, a very important part to talk to educators and see how they feel it's going and have a circle back every so often to grade, to grade things that have been done, things that have been talked about, things have been implemented. And you know, I've been a part of corporate America and we get graded, you know, several different times a year with timestamps on it. So I think as we move through, especially this, this, this time of how things are going on in the world, that that's very important. Are we making sure that we're hitting the market? If we're not, then making a change.
Matt, I'm going to ask you the same question. How can a board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out?
That is a tough question, but I think the, the main way we know if things are being accomplished and things are being carried out are by taking into account all of the students and the teachers and staff's concerns and also the burdens that they're facing. And then measuring the progress that we set out to accomplish by listening to all students, parents, community, teachers, staff, administrators. And the way we do that is by asking questions, talking to one another, sharing ideas. I think collaboration, you know, for, for me and my professional life, but also my family life, correct, collaboration is the key. So listening, asking the right questions and then being accountable for what you learn and what you set out to achieve. Being accountable and, and making sure you're meeting the goals you set out to accomplish.
And I'm going to read off Jesse Young's response to that. How can a board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out? In holistic terms, it can be measured by the wellbeing of our community. If our community and all stakeholders acknowledge we are providing an excellent education and foundation for life success for our children, then we have accomplished our goal. Most of the board goals are tied to the superintendent goals for the district as well. So I'm going to go backwards here now. I skipped question number three, but I think since we're talking number nine, I think three relates. Especially since some of you, we, we have time commitments. How will you handle managing the time commitment of being a board member? Because that is probably more than most people realize on that. So I'm going to ask that. And I'm going to start with you, Matt. Question three, how will you handle managing, managing the time commitment of being a board member?
Thank you. Outside of, of my job and my family, because I'm undertaking this, I can't think of anything more important than representing the community and the school board. And being the voice of that community. I've, fortunately, I've gotten to wear a bunch of different hats. I'm the president of the AFL-CIO in Champaign County, sit on the Parkland Foundation. I'm also the business manager of Local 149. All of those meetings are usually in the evening or really early in the morning because they're outside of work hours. And I've been able to manage all of them while raising three kids. Now I'm kind of on the downhill side of that. My youngest is sixteen and a half. He can drive himself around. He's kind of, kind of set off and as you all know, I'm sure, he really has no interest in being involved with me much. Kind of at a point in my life that I have time on my hand and giving back to the community is something that I really look forward to being able to do.
I have a sixteen-year-old son too, and now he has no interest in me whatsoever. Let's go to Levi. Same question, how will you handle managing the time commitment of being a board member?
You know, I think the biggest thing is to, to prioritize. And then once, you know, you figure out what's going to be most important to, to handle at that time is, is the, the time management. You know, throughout my years, you know, it just seems like there's never enough hours in the day. But as I'm sure you can all relate. But you know, when you sit down, you look at it and you schedule your day throughout, you know, and that's what I have to do. I have marks that I have to hit at work every single day. I have meetings about making other meetings. So you know, it's more importantly of the, the prioritization. And then the time management. More importantly, it's going to come down to the selfless service of why we're wanting to be on the school board. And it's going to be to make that time for the students.
Wayne. I didn't mark you down for answering this question yet, so I'm going to ask you, how will you handle the time commitments?
Well, this, this last year's probably been strange to a lot of people where they've had to actually work from home. My, my office is my home. I've worked out of my home for the last twenty-six, twenty-seven years. So I make my monthly schedules and I probably have a little bit of a luxury more so than some people where I can take time out of my day and do things during the middle of the day or the evening as I need be. So I have that flexibility to be able to, to, to do that. Plus I have, I have the phone and I have all, all the calendars around me to keep myself pointed in the right direction.
Jesse Young. How will you handle managing the time commitment, commitment of being a board member? I have served on the board for the past two years, including volunteering additional time when needed for various committees. I will continue to make the board a priority. My professional job allows for flexibility and my children understand that the board meetings take priority during their sports and other activities that I have, that I've had from this. My husband, James, recognizes the importance of my responsibilities and provides a great deal of support to allow me to fulfill my duties. Our family makes Tuscola C U S D real one a priority. That is Jesse Young. So as we go through this, we have, we have mentioned or at least started to talk about some of the financial issues responding to our candidates. So I'm going to ask question number twelve. What are your financial priorities for the school district? Examples, reduction in class size, improved technology in the classroom, maintaining current programs, adding programs. So what are your priorities for the school district? And I am going to start with Jesse Young. That. According to candidate Jesse Young, her priorities are fiscal responsibility, proper stewardship of bond funds, including the five-year construction plan, technology updates in the classroom and curriculum updates. The, that question is going to go to Wade first. Wade, what are your financial priorities for the school?
Financial integrity first and foremost. I want to keep the doors open thirty years from now. So I think it starts with us now being responsible. And, and my second is increasing technology. Because that's driving the world right now. And you know, it's kind of humbling when your children are coming home and teaching me things in technology. So that, that's very important to me. And I also would, would like to see, do some research, looking into bringing back and, and maintaining some of the IA and things of that nature and maybe, maybe looking into having like a countywide IA and bringing people to Tuscola from other schools and maybe able to make a little money from that. So those are some things that I'm very interested in researching into.
I'm going to ask you the, the same question. And what are your financial priorities for the school district?
My top priority would be ensuring that our teachers, support staff and administrators have all of the resources they need to provide a quality and top-of-the-line learning environment for our kids. As I've said, I'm committed to finding resources and ways to add industrial arts and other programs to the school system. Maintaining and improving the school's facilities. I think that actually will create a stronger learning environment for, for all the students. And because the students deserve the best and not just in the classroom. When they walk the halls, go to the office, the restrooms, they deserve a clean and safe environment. And I think working with the community to make sure that that's always the case. That's where we'll succeed. And as resources come in, we need the community's involvement, this, the parents and administrators' involvement to get new perspective, new ideas and better ways to make sure that our students are getting the very best.
Levi, I believe you're bringing, bringing us to the end of that question round. If you would like to.
You know, priority be facility dates. And you know, most importantly, I want the faculty and to the the students to feel safe and secure. Also to be happy and genuinely proud of of where they're at. I think that kind of relates to the retention of the of the teachers as well. So you know, and being fiscally responsible. Like you said, we've got to keep the doors open and we've got to do that by the fiscal integrity. So you know, and and bringing in outside, you know, of the box type of ideas that could help facilitate that. But going to technology, this is what's driving the world. Here we are doing a Zoom meeting and, you know, two years ago, we would have been doing this in person. So we've got to adapt and to to overcome. So you know, this is what's gonna drive the world today.
And as long as we're on financial questions, I think question number fifteen is really puts a light on that school board members have to make some difficult decisions. You guys are in the hot seat and this question puts you directly in that hot seat. So here's how I'm gonna phrase it. It's question fifteen. It had two parts to it. So in the event, the financial situation becomes more dire. I'm gonna ask you to make two points here. A was what specific, it says programs, I'm gonna I'm gonna have you limit this to just one. What specific program would you make a priority? And what specific program would you be willing to sacrifice? And Levi, I'm gonna start with you on that one.
You know, it's probably the the toughest question that's been asked so far up to this point. I'm not for sure at this point that I could give a give a solid answer. I haven't been elected. I haven't had the ability to to hear from the the students, from the teachers, to see what is most important to them. Because what's important to me doesn't necessarily matter. I'm the advocate. I want to hear what's important to the the faculty and to the students. And at that point, then I would develop a plan of what is going to be, you know, sacrificed and what isn't. But honestly, I don't think that I could give an answer until I actually have input from the ones that matter.
Same same question for you. What specific program would you make a priority? And what specific program would you be willing to sacrifice?
Mr. Sweeney, without without being read in and educated on situations and all possibilities that would come from all areas and speaking to the people, the community and students administration, I I just don't feel at this point in time that would be wise to to even come close to answering that question. You know, I've been discussing that I'm one of those people that, like Mr. Miller said, were advocates. And without being able to do your due diligence, that's almost impossible to answer. So I agree with him.
Matt, you are up for that same question. What specific program would you make a priority? And what specific program would you be willing to sacrifice?
So the I don't have a specific program that I would make a priority, but I would say that obviously the core programs are the priority. But with that being said, every student deserves access to all the different paths and career options out there. And it's important to remember that students get a lot of value from all of the programs they are involved with. My son's in the band. He loves it. And he gets an enormous amount of benefit from that, from the other his peers, the new band director. It means the world to him. So making sure that there that those passions are being cared for as best we can when deciding these priorities are is the main priority. And then as far as cuts, you know, for me, I think the main thing we have to do is make sure we don't have to make cuts. But if we do, working with the community to make those very difficult decisions and and keeping in mind that every program and every class has at least one student, that that means the world to. And remembering that, that while it may not be important to you or to the maybe the majority, it's going to be extremely important to at least some of the students and their future. So keeping those things in mind when making those difficult decisions, I think also is it would be my main priority.
I agree with you, gentlemen. That is a very tough question. No one ever wants to bring up cuts. You know, and and unfortunately, sometimes it seems like the fine arts, band art always seem to be the first ones lined up. And but no one wants to see any any of that. And I'm sure hopefully as things open up, the economy gets better, money's just gonna be pouring into the school system. We're just we maybe we can just add things. Okay. Let me read Jesse Young's, to be fair. She did have a response. In the event, what specific programs would you make a priority? She states, I think more information is needed to answer the question. It would depend on how dire the financial system, financial situation was along with what accounting fund it affected. And the second part, what programs are you willing to sacrifice? I think more information is needed to answer this question. It would depend on how dire the financial system situation was along with what accounting fund it was affected. So all all four of you have been very consistent in that answer. So I think that says a lot. Thank you. I did not come up with that question, by the way. Let's move on to maybe a little easier question here. Question number seventeen states, what do you think is the greatest strength of the Tuscola Community School District 301? And I am going to start with Wayne. What is the greatest strength in the school district?
I just can't pinpoint one, so I'll give you two. I I think the greatest strength of when I came through and even to today is that our teachers, our educators, everybody that helps our children become better young adults. I just love it when my children come home and and say, oh, I just love so-and-so. I just love, oh, he's great or she's great, or I really enjoyed that book. I saw them boss or something in them. And to this day, I still have mentorships with some of my previous educators and they're my neighbors and I call them friends. So on top of that, it's the unity of this town. This town is one big family and we all come together and and we we rejoice when our own do well. And and I think that with those two things together, that's what makes us a special community. But I would say the teachers, that I I just as a child that had some learning disabilities that to have those teachers take interest in me and help me through those and be as successful as I have and go on to get an advanced degree in in college, it was it was meaningful.
Let's go, Matt. I'm gonna ask you the same question. What do you think is the greatest strength of the Tuscola Community School District 301?
As Wade just said, I think the community. This Tuscola community obviously cares deeply for our children and and the schools reflect that. And everyone involved, whether it be the teachers, the support staff, the principals, the coaches, band director, the parents, everyone's involved and they're all involved for the benefit of the students here. And honestly, that gives me confidence. And that's honestly why I chose to put my my hat in the ring for this because I believe because of that support and because of that care, we can work together and collaborate to make this the best school district, the best community possible, no matter what types of challenges we face.
Levi, if you would like to answer the same question, what do you think is the greatest strength of the community? Tuscola Community School District.
You know, I didn't have the opportunity to to attend Tuscola School. However, I did have the opportunity as a recruiter, you know, to walk into many different schools in a hundred and hundred and fifty-mile radius of here. The biggest thing is is the the acceptance, the open arms of the way that they accepted not only me, but then accepted the, you know, the idea of some of their students joining the military. I think that, you know, leadership down and that comes from the community, the support and the unity that's involved with that. As I walked into Tuscola as a recruiter, you know, they accepted me with open arms. And that for me has always been a grand impact in my mind. And now I'm very fortunate to be a part of the the Tuscola District.
Jesse Young responds. Our staff at all levels are the best at Tuscola CUST301. This past year has been especially difficult for every one of our students, staff, community, and parents. The pandemic has produced challenges of an unseen magnitude within our district and throughout the entire education system. The district's ability to provide in-person learning, the entire the entire school year thus far, has been a Herculean effort achievable only through the selfless commitment and dedication of our amazing administrators, teachers, parents, and students. We are one of the only districts in the entire nation that have remained in person and safe throughout the crisis. This is a critical achievement because most all health organizations have indicated in-person learning is most beneficial for all our students' mental health and well-being. Our staff at all levels has had the uncertainty of not knowing what each day new day holds and has come through with grace and dignity. District staff has worked tirelessly for our students and their family during this unprecedented time. They should be commended. That is candidate Jesse Young. You all had me at teachers. You could have just stopped there. I would have been fine. So speaking of that, there's a question that question eighteen says, when planning for district needs such as technology and curriculum, will you seek input from teachers and aides? And then it's pretty much a closed question, a yes or no. But I'd like to open up that a little bit and sort of ask you, how would you go about seeking input from teachers and aides on technology and curriculum? That is question number eighteen. And why don't we start with you, Matt?
The answer is yes. Yes, we do need to seek input. And honestly, I couldn't imagine not seeking their input because they're the experts. They're the professionals. They know what's going on day to day and they need to be heard. This last year, year and a half has shown that they're actually, they're the heroes of this community. And they've had to sacrifice so much just in the last year alone. I couldn't imagine again not getting their input. They go to the classrooms. They have the curriculum. They know the resources they need. I don't. I have ideas and I'm sure we all do. But but you teachers are the ones that know what at the end of the day needs to happen and what you need to do that. So you need to be heard and you deserve to be heard. So that was a long way of getting to absolutely yes.
Thank you. Levi, I'm gonna ask you the same question. I think the plenty needs for district, technology and curriculum. How would you seek input from teachers and aides on that issue?
So of course, you know, the biggest thing is, is, you know, I would hope that I don't even have to seek it, that we would have that relationship, that they would just come forth with that information. They're the ones that, you know, are on the front lines. They're the ones that are there every single day with our students. They know the, you know, what's needed. And then I would want them to understand that I am completely open-minded. I, you know, will take their their thoughts and their processes and be the advocate for them because they're the ones that, you know, like had been said, for the last year in this unprecedented time, have been there with our students, putting themselves, you know, first or, you know, the students first and and selfishly, you know, selfishly doing that for the benefit of the students. So, you know, I guess going back to not only yes, but I would like to have that relationship where they just come forward with that information because they know that it will be, you know, voiced on.
Thank you. And then Wade, I'm gonna ask you the same question. In terms of technology and curriculum, how would you seek input from teachers and aides?
In order to make the best possible decision in any situation, one or multiple people making these decisions need the best input. And if you're not getting input from all sides, you're not doing do your due diligence. And so yes, I do agree that we need the input from teachers and teachers aides. I I I kind of look at this and I don't look at it as teachers and teachers aides, their fellow community members and friends and and what I also call family. And these are the same people that a lot of my grown-up went to school with and they trust my judgment. I trust their judgment. So in order to make your best complete total answer for these children, it'd be yes to talk to them all.
Jesse Young's answer to the question is yes, definitely. Not only obtaining their input, but utilizing their tremendous skill and knowledge to effectively implement these resources to improve our children's education. Perhaps just as important is to understand and accommodate their needs as teachers and hopefully reduce their workload and improve their well-being. Question nineteen, and and some of these questions seem to cover similar material. If it sounds like I've asked you the same question, it's they may be related. But I think this is a a good question to share with people in the community. Can you share one idea that you feel would improve our district? If and if if costs weren't an option, if, you know, you know, you had wide-ranging ability to do almost anything you could, what would you do to improve our district? And I'm gonna start with you, Wade. This would be referencing question number nineteen.
I'll tell you one thing that I would like to see happen, and this is kind of different and off the wall. I think a lot of our communities made up a lot of different individuals, a lot of socioeconomic differences. And I think that there are those families that are really tied into teachers and the administrators and and what's going on. I would I would like to see a commission of maybe some people that branch between your board and branch between the community and branch between the teachers to where some people would feel they could come and talk to them and maybe have an outreach where we could get more people kind of in in the know with teachers and maybe find a way to get things for our schools that maybe we could get from corporate America but kind of have a way that all three could reach all three areas and 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 really bind us together tighter so that, you know, it's kind of a one-for-all type thing, like a one Tuscola. But I would love to see, you know, like a a a group of people that you could that people could go to maybe feel comfortable with, maybe with questions about teaching, administration, and pulling people tighter because I think that we all are coming from different directions.
I'm gonna ask you next with that question. Can you share one idea you would feel would improve our district?
So the the teachers in the schools are doing a great job of preparing our students for their future after they graduate. But unfortunately, because of budget cuts and a lack of funding, the industrial arts classes and programs have been reduced almost to nothing. So for me, providing students that are interested in trades or other careers, because they don't have as many options, my one idea would be to build that program back. Kids deserve an opportunity to learn a trade or build a skill and maybe start a career right after they get out of high school, and that is the one thing, again, it's near and dear to my heart, mostly because it's been my my career, my my career, my brother's career, my father's career, and we've had wonderful careers, fulfilling careers, and I would work with the administrators, with the community to identify funds and ways to bring back a a really premier industrial arts program to this community.
Levi, same question, can you share one idea that you feel would improve our district?
Simply, I think involvement, you know, involvement not only with the faculty, but the other students, and then others in the community. There's, there's folks in the community that, you know, don't have school-age children, you know, do they feel like that they're left out of being able to contribute to the to the school? So I think that we're missing a certain demographic, just, you know, and they have equitable contributions that they take. So, you know, getting everybody involved, and we've all talked about it, is it the greatest thing of Tuscola is our community? So let's get everybody within every single demographic involved with the school. These are, you know, the next generation that's going to be, you know, the guy that, you know, starts the next business. These are going to be the ones that are ultimately going to be leaders and teachers and so forth. So let's just get back to the of involvement and open-mindedness and taking everybody's ideas and seeing if we can implement them.
Jesse Young responds. The board is working towards updating our buildings. Exciting changes are coming. The superintendent is working on technology updates for our classrooms. I think the next step is to start the plan for curriculum updates. And that is Jesse. Now we have a question. I'm going to, question number 21, says, what kind of relationship should a district or board have with its community, with its parents and families? Because, you know, when you're, when you're on that school board, you have a pretty big target on your back, depending on what's what's happening, so. I'll start with Jesse Young here, and then go through the three of you. Jesse responds. The board always welcomes input from parents and community. Each meeting starts with a time for community members to address the board. Our email and phone numbers are available. The board here, the board is here to represent the community, and we volunteer our time to serve the district. So, question number 21, and I'm going to start with Levi. What kind of relationship should a district or board have with its community and with its parents and family?
Once again, the involvement. You've got to put yourself out there, they got to know who you are, they have to understand that you have an open mind, and, you know, maybe our viewpoint's different, and that's going to happen, we're all humans. However, coming to the, you know, conclusion of what's going to be best for all, and understanding that, you know, hey, you can come to me, and, you know, we can develop a plan together, because ultimately, that's the biggest thing. We talked about community, I want community involvement from every single level, so you know, that's the biggest part of this, is I think that just being that open-mindedness and understanding that based off of, you know, what you've done in the past, you're always going to be fair, and you're not going to unwaver in that.
Wade, I'm going to ask you the same question. What kind of relationship should a district board have with its community and with its parents and families?
Mr. Sweeney, I answered this question earlier, but I want to hit the high points again. I'm an open-door kind of guy. I don't want to reinvent the wheel, I want everybody's input, because we all pay taxes which go towards the education of our children, so I think we all have an equal voice, and I was very humbled when the word got around that I was running for school board, how many people did reach out to me, and how many people had the same question, I didn't really want to bother you, and I told them, you need to bother me, because it's, if I make the board, I need to know your thoughts, I need to know what everybody feels. But the main thing is that I told everybody, I said, you know, if you're a little heated and you're a little bothered, please come a day later and come with a good solution, because I do believe every problem has a solution somewhere, and somebody has it, so if we keep a collective cool head, talk together, talk things out, come up with a good solution, I'm all in favor of that, that's how I like to operate.
Sorry for missing that you'd already been asked that question. You had a good answer, so we liked hearing from you again. And then Matt, same question, what kind of relationship should a district board have with its community, with its parents and family?
So obviously, the board needs to be open, transparent, and actively seek input from the public, but I would argue that it shouldn't just post the meeting times and allow public input at the meetings. I've watched the board meetings on Facebook Live and know that there's three or six attendees watching them, because they're not well-attended, because I think part of that is, it's intimidating. This, this little forum with just the the five of us, or seven of us, however many are on here now, is, it's intimidating, and it can be a little difficult for someone that's not comfortable with this to be involved, so I would like to see that the board go meet the families where they're at. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but as I've been running for this position, I've been canvassing and knocking on doors with my neighbors and and people throughout the community, and it's such a great conversation I've gotten to have with people that I didn't know, and they were appreciative, letting their voice be heard a little bit. So actively trying to encourage that type of community involvement and engagement would be what I believe the relationship should try and accomplish.
I've gone through the candidates on that question, and what I was going to do, Athena, I'm going to let you know, I'm going to cover 23. I'm going to cover 25, those two questions, and then Athena, if you see anything that, because I've been skipping through questions, but I've been trying to make sure that the the ideas behind all the questions have been answered, so if you see something that I've missed, you can let me know, but I'm thinking 23, 25, and then closing comments on that, so. And I think that's where we're at now, just for that. So let me start with question 23, because I think, you know, this can get very, there can be conflicting interests, and emotions can run high in school board meetings, because that's why we're here, we're passionate about this. And that, so, when faced with conflicting interests, how would you find balance among bargaining unit members, administrators, parents, and other school board members? Good luck with this question, okay. I'm going to throw that in there, and let's see, I'm going to start with Jesse Young and let you guys ball that over a little bit. So Jesse Young responds. By listening first, to understand the interests and needs of each member of our community with compassion, then working collectively with respectful and constructive communication to create the ideal path to our collective goal, which is our children's future and the well-being of our staff and community. That is the response from Jesse Young, and I'm going to go to you, Wade, for question number 23. When faced with conflicting interests, how would you find balance amongst these many varied groups?
This kind of sounds what I do every day in corporate America. It's a, it's a big shuffle. What I've learned throughout my life, whether it be in the military, politically speaking, people have different political views, here's my thing. We all are passionate about something, and the one thing that I like to see, especially in today, is that, you know what, you have to sit back, relax, throw your interest to the back of the bus, listen to everybody, and write down and accumulate everybody's feelings, and you're going to have to make the best decision that you can for the masses, and that's what this position really is. And sometimes, you know, there'll be tempers flared, but I think that the passion drives good conversation. Sometimes you have to agree to disagree, but at the end of the day, you're going to make, and I'm going to make, the best decision for us now, as for the future, and 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 be able to keep those doors open and keep educating young children and letting them make those memories that that we all got to make back in the day, so that's just the way I think it is, it's, it's, it's not an easy task, but it's one that takes patience.
Now we have Matt Kelly. Matt, I'm going to ask you the same thing. When faced with conflicting interests, how would you find balance amongst all these varying groups?
Sure, so it is a tough question, but at the end of the day, I think no matter what the question is, the answer should always be what's best for the students. How will they benefit from the decisions that are being decided? We need to make sure that at its core, we are all considering the students, and we're making sure that we're positioning them to succeed. I know there are a lot of financial struggles in the state and in our community that we're facing, but, and honestly, and obviously, there's no question, I'm an advocate for union labor and support the teachers' union, and I believe in the value of what unions mean, especially for the Tuscola families that are involved with unions. I've gotten the opportunity to negotiate several contracts, and what I've learned is building bridges between both sides, that is what has made me successful in those negotiations, understanding that there's a need for compromise on all sides, and then listening to one another, respecting one another, and then working towards compromise and having a true collaborative approach. I think that will help answer every question, especially again, making sure we're always focusing on what's best for our students.
Levi, I'm going to ask you the same question. When faced with conflicting interests, how would you find balance amongst these various groups?
Sure, I think, you know, treating everybody with respect, compassion, knowing that you've developed those relationships, and we're all going to have the different viewpoints. However, you know, having that open-mindedness and ultimately, you know, maybe making compromises, weighing the pros and cons, because at the end of the day, we have to make sure whatever that we're dealing with at the time also is reflected upon the Tuscola community in our vision and our values. So with that, you know, is the compromise, I think, and and the open-mindedness and treating everybody with the respect and the compassion that they deserve, and everybody has the opportunity to make an equitable contribution. May not be the decision that they like, but sometimes doing the the right thing isn't the easy thing, and doing what's easy isn't right. So it'd be tough, but I think that as long as you stay fair and consistent, people will like, trust, and respect you.
And this will be the last question I'm asking, unless Athena has others for for us, because she's really the one in charge here, I'm just figuring out. The question is, what suggestions do you have for recruiting and retaining teachers and other staff in our school district? And Levi, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you. Um, so I had actually answered this one earlier, but I am going to kind of have some key points on that. We, you're, you're, you're good. So, you know, is keeping everybody happy, keeping them safe, you know, having a facility that they are, they're proud of, and when people feel safe and happy, people stay. We have to actively recruit qualified candidates, these are the ones that are teaching our students, setting them on a path for success after they leave the school. With that being said, we, you know, we have to retain them, and I think that keeping them safe, secure, and once again, the, you know, knowing that they can come to you and ask, you know, questions and take input, are going to feel that they have a contribution within the community.
Thank you for for responding to that question again. I have been writing these down, I just haven't been looking on that. Wade, I'd like to ask you the same question. What suggestions do you have for recruiting and retaining teachers and other staff in our school district?
Quickly, I, when I went to school here, I had the same administrators and the same teachers, nobody left. It was just a destination, it was a way of life. Teachers came and they, they just never went away, and they just, they became members of the community, had children, their children had children. I would like to get back to that, I think we have the administration now, and the and the board now, and the community behind that. We've had, I've seen several teachers leave here and come back and realize this really is a good place to be, but I think if we continue to foster, you know, we like to come back, become a teacher, if you want to become a principal, we'll hire within, if you're a good candidate, and always foster that, and and let people know that you work hard, you will be rewarded. I think if we get back to that, that, once again, it's the one community that Tuscola's always had, if we can get back to letting, you know, really good candidates know, you come here, you can succeed, and you can do the things you want to do, there's many different things you can do, but along with that, you have to have good facilities, you have to be fiscally responsible, and you have to have the technology for them to feel like that they can expand and grow here. So I think, you know, we just foster that community feeling, and and that will bring people back. I think we just got to stay, you know, the course for that.
Thank you, and I, most of the people you're referencing, I worked with for a long time, and I was, I was the youngest one in the district for a long time. Now I'm not, okay. Matt, I do know, I've noticed you answered that question earlier, that was one of yours, would you like to add to that at all?
I'm sure, and I feel like I've answered it twice, kind of, almost, but the main thing, if you take anything away from my three answers, is the better we can make our schools, the better we can make our community, giving our students a a great education and preparing them for life after school helps us build a better Tuscola that people will want to live in, and ultimately, that's how we can recruit the best teachers and staff for the schools. The ideas I've already mentioned, like that welcome back home idea, partnering with the business community, other ideas like that to help this community really stand out and build on our strengths, I think that's what we need to do. And being open to ideas to to incentivize people to to come here and put down roots and raise a family and learn why we all love this community so much.
Jesse Young responds. The board supports administration in recruiting and retaining teachers and other staff. The board works with the administration to fill positions as needed. I have always tried to personally support our teachers. I was in various positions in North Ward, PTO, have assisted in fundraising efforts through donors choose. I've assisted in fundraising efforts through Donors Choose at EP. I also updated the teachers lounge at EP to ensure they had a space to relax during their breaks with working refrigerators, microwaves, counter space and updated seating. In short, I've recognized through direct feedback from our teachers, what the board and we as individuals must do to support their needs. We must provide the best environment to ensure their happiness and well being and performing the vital role they play in our children's lives. Thank you." So what we will do now, we are coming to our final close with each person being given two minutes to sort of bring everything to a close and maybe add anything that if we haven't covered something that you would like to cover or hit upon again. And I am going to start with Wade, with your closing remarks.
First and foremost, just want to remind everybody that, you know, I came up through the system and it's a great system. And it was one that I wanted to raise my kids in so that they had the same memories that I had. I do know that the world is changing around us and we need to do a little bit of catch up in some facilities and some technology and making the classrooms a lot better than the same that I had when I was there because it's just a different place and time. We can do it together. We just need to bind ourselves together and really have that sense of community and, and send our children off into the world really educated with a really out, good outlook in life. And, and then we can sit back and watch them hopefully come back and be successful as young adults raising families here. So I just want to continue the, the Tuscola one mantra, if you would. And, you know, continue to send our children off with great experiences and great memories.
Your closing remarks?
Well, I'd just like to thank you, thank you to the other candidates, thank you to the teachers' union for putting this together. This has been a great opportunity to hear from everybody and learn more about the school board and the school system. Just like to reinforce that as a school board member, I will fight to make sure that our students are put first. They all deserve to be shown a path to succeed, whether that's going to college, community college, or going into their chosen field that they may go into right after school. I'm really running to make sure that every Tuscola student is positioned for success. I believe I have the background and experience to make sure that this is not just a dream, but a reality. And I thank you all again for the opportunity.
Levi, your closing remarks?
Yeah. First and foremost, I just want to thank you guys for hosting this. I also want to thank the other candidates. You know, with some of your answers that you gave, it's eye opening. You know, I think that some things that we see eye to eye on. And, you know, for me, it's also an opportunity to learn more about the process, what the school board does. And should the community decide that, you know, they want me as a representative on the school board, that they understand that, you know, given my experience in the military and the ability to, to plan and to execute in a, you know, concise and clear fashion. But more importantly, that I'm going to be an open mind, that they can come to me. I'm going to be the advocate for them. And most importantly, that what we all want is for the students and the faculty to succeed. And that we take these young individuals and we make them successful members of society within our community. And we continue the community bond that we all have here in Tuscola. Because like I said earlier, the biggest reason I want to give back is for the way that Tuscola accepted me when I was that recruiter and then when I moved to town here four years ago. So it's my opportunity to give back to the, the community at this point.
Matt, before we conclude, I just wanted to say thank you to all the the three members who were here to give of your afternoon, putting up with, with me for two hours on this. Obviously, very, it's very clear from your thought out responses that you take this very seriously and our community is lucky to have people who are willing to, to spend their time to make this a better place. And it is a great community. I've been here for almost thirty years as a, as a teacher and I really appreciate what you're, you're doing for us on that. And then Athena, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you candidates for spending a good chunk of your Sunday afternoon. Not to mention all the time you spent preparing for that whole slew of questions. We understand that was a lot for you to go through. Just thank you for answering those. And we look forward to working with the district and having this posted by the district so that the community can also see your answers. That's right. I hope you all have a nice.
Be on my speed dial if you become a board member, just let that communication.
Give me a call.
But thank you, and thank you all the people who placed the questions on the list. And it looks like, I thought it went well and we had a great afternoon. And I missed the Illini game today. Oh, wait, no, I didn't. Is it too soon?